The really cool things that they have done recently to help support our students and some ideas for the future. So Erin.
First of all, can I ask you what PEAK stands for?
Yes, you sure can. Parents Empowering Able Kids. So that is us. And we, so that's what it stands for. Our mission is to improve the quality of life for individuals with special needs by facilitating recreational, educational, and employment opportunities that would not otherwise be available for our students here in the district. And we're growing beyond like, we were pre-K through transition. We're trying to grow beyond that too. So. Um, we came last year about this time, maybe a little later, to celebrate our van. And it was so exciting. It was like eight years in the making. Lots of penny pinching and all the things to get it. Um, lots of hard work to go into it. Um, so we have van number one. Not long after that, by January of this year, we had some opportunities come about and we worked on networking a little bit and we worked with Wasatch Community Foundation. And we were able to purchase a second van with their help. So we had a little bit of funding and they supported us in funding the second van. And it just kind of, things fell into place. There was somebody selling a van. These are kind of hard to come by these accessible vans. So we were really excited about that and really grateful for that relationship we're forging with the foundation. They're very supportive of our organization. Um, and then next, because of um, just maybe exposure and people seeing how great this is in the need, an anonymous donor saw a need and donated a third PEAK van, just a regular minivan. A little older, but runs. And so we have three vans now that can, how many students did we say? Nineteen students. We can get places. Classes can split up or they can take a full classroom. And this helps to serve as our mild mod classes if they want. Um, it's mostly being used by the Learning Lab classes, but it's there and available for anyone with an IEP. So if those, if those resource teachers want to use it, they have capabilities to use it, those vans. So we're really excited about that and we just wanted to celebrate and let you know what's happening here with that. Um, we also just wanted to update you on some things going on. We, the recreation side of things, so we use the vans for that. Um, we have National Ability Center programs that we've, I don't know how much you all know about this, but National Ability Center is a really great nationally known organization in Park City. It's just in our backyard. And so we help scholarship kids in our districts to go do adaptive recreation at the National Ability Center. And some of the things that, that they do with their classes, so their teachers can just, the, the Learning Lab classes, their teacher can call and schedule a field trip for their students to go and do adaptive equestrian. Um, well, so this year we got equestrian, so that hasn't started yet and that's a really hard program to get into. But because of the relationship, the National Ability Center has really loved PEAK, which is so fantastic. We've gotten into the equestrian program. So how many of our schools, do you remember? Like six, seven? Seven of our nine schools will be going in and riding horses um, with the adaptive program there. In addition to that, we also have, I gotta look at the pictures of rock climbing and cycling and skiing, downhill skiing. And there are other programs too, but those are just some of the highlights. Um, we wanted to also mention some of our new partnerships within the past year. So we partnered, as I mentioned, with the Community Foundation. Um, we have Special Olympics in the valley now, which just started this past year and we're helping support them. Um, and then Soldier Hollow came to our, the board meeting last year where we celebrated the event. And they said, how can we get involved? How can we work with your students? So they've had some of our students up, uh, on the mountain there, skiing there, and hopefully we'll have more this year. Um, and then there's an, there's another nonprofit in the valley, Podium Racing. And she does, she's a triathlon coach, but she does an adaptive triathlon at the, in the spring, right after our five K. Um, and she usually, she works mostly with the transition college kids, but she wants to expand that. And so we're working with her to do that, to set up some events to help and get her helping train some of the kids in our districts, which is really exciting for us because it's really great for them to learn to read and write all these important things. But some of these other things are lifelong things that they'll enjoy, skills that, that help with their mental health as well as their physical wellbeing, like all of us, right? Being able to recreate is really important. So um, we, we also wanted to mention just that we have our five K date for next year. We always get it set up early on. So if you want to come, May third, twenty twenty-five, we love to have anyone there who wants to come. We have a lot of support from, um, it grows each year. It's getting bigger and bigger and it's, it's just got a, a great energy to it. Um, JR Smith is probably our biggest school supporter. They have a couple of running clubs and they have their kids in the running clubs and then some buddies that run with them. So we probably, we have student, just student, peer students. We have a hundred and twenty kids with their buddies from JR Smith. And then we have lots of support from teachers, special ed teachers. We even, some of the schools, their, their GE teachers are there. Um, and then of course families of kids with special needs, but we want, we want more and more people to come to this event. It's a busy time of year, but it's worth, it's worth the couple hours that you'll put into it. So that is coming up. We also were really supported by the high school at that event. The baseball team, the JR OTC, the student government, drill, cheer, LIA. They've all been involved in helping, they volunteer and help us with that event, like setting up, um, being on the course to direct people, taking down, handing out treats, doing registration. They've been really, really wonderful to work with. Um, and then we, um, Claire and her genius thought about working with um, the wellness coordinator and having this five K be one, like the culminating event at the end of the year for the wellness program for the district. So she's working on that. Um, so we can get more exposure, get more people there. Um, and then looking ahead, we have, we, in our budget, we're, we're setting money aside for our fourth minivan. Um, and then also because we're working with the Special Olympics and the adaptive recreation, this podium racing, and Carla Benningfield, our adaptive recreation, our adaptive PE teacher, and Kelsey and Camry, the, the physical therapists, have a lot of equipment, but it's, uh, adaptive equipment takes up a lot of space. And so we need space and we need a place to store it. So we are working to build a shed. And we'll be asking for approval later on. We're working on the location and donors and people to build it. But we have some good things in the works. So hopefully, we're hoping this year, we'll see. We'll, we'll be back to, to ask for approval of that. But those are some of the things that we've got going on. Uh, we, I have a handout that Stacy printed off, I think, and added to the packet that just has a highlight. It's got a few more things on there, so you can just know what we're doing. Um, but that's what we've got going on. Thanks for your support. We really appreciate all you do for our students.
Thank you. Hold on. I may have, I may have missed this, but what's your name?
Erin Sabey. Sorry. I'm Erin Sabey.
And you're?
And Eliza Woodland, Becky Phillips, Tabitha Benzler, we're the board of PEAK. And then we've got lots of other great parents who are involved as well.
How many students would you say are in the, the program?
Yeah, um, that are served by PEAK. I, I, I'm glad you asked that because I have that in my notes and I missed it. Um, I would say a hundred, is that over a hundred kids? Over a hundred kids who are served through PEAK.
You guys, uh, go ahead, Claire.
Oh, I was just gonna say, sorry to interrupt Superintendent. I was just gonna say, these ladies, one thing that I really appreciate, and I was gonna mention it, but I wasn't, I'm sure if you were going to, is one, they're so inclusive. And the one thing that we have been looking at, these wonderful people here, is noticing that we do not have Spanish speaking, um, parents that are participating. And we know that there's a great need for them to have the same supports and for their, their students and their children to have the exact same experiences. So they're very actively going into, um, schools and have some things set up, meeting with each individual school and their administration, and they're looking for ways to serve that population. I just wanted to let them know how much I appreciate their, not just taking everyone that's, you know, right here, ready to, um, you know, jump on board, but to really search out those who need supports. And I just really appreciate them more and more. They're just looking for ways to serve. And I really, I really love these ladies and appreciate what they're doing for our students and for our community.
Thank you for mentioning that. That's, um, JR Smith has a really big population of Latino kids. Um, and that, that's where my kids go to school. And so I've been working with administration and the sped teachers. And we're trying to figure out, there, there is a, there's an employee who, I don't know the employee, I don't know the student, but I know there's an employee with a student in, in the Learning Lab. And so we're trying to get connected there to see how we can, how we can start working with, at least get one parent in, so that then it breaks down a barrier there, so that we can bring more in.
So I wonder, with that thought, if Yuri with Latino Coalition, if that would be a good connection to get them?
Is Yuri at the middle school at TMS? Yeah. So I'm on school community council there, so I've met her. I need to connect with her. I've connected with Diane Zer- Zerabel, am I saying that right? I've connected, last year I had a good conversation with her. We worked on some like translating things. And then Angelica Zelaya, I'm gonna, last year we were supposed to meet and we just, things didn't line up. So we'll be working on that too.
I feel like we have some people there that you can try and connect with, that we can help you connect. I really liked that you went into the details of, I mean, I know we're involved, the school district, but I loved how you went into the details of how different organizations are helping you, like drill and, you know, just the different, um, student organizations are helping you. So I was really appreciative of that information.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the five K has become a, you know, an event for everybody and they're really looking forward to and, and to serve with. And yeah, it's been a neat thing.
Thank you.
So grateful for you and for helping the students and having, having, you know, helping them have an outlet or something that they can be interested in and, because they do, every, every human needs.
It does. And I think we're about creating good humans, right? Not just our kids with special needs, but the whole community. Bringing us all together makes a better community and we really recognize that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Are you guys aware of, or maybe you participate in the, the special needs rodeo?
Yes. Well, yes. I've gone with my kids for years and years and, and a lot of you have gone. Yeah. And we let our, we let our parents know. We'll send out. So there's a, a smaller group of parents who are like really involved and then we have a bigger group who we send out information to, who are trying to get more involved. We're changing our meetings up a little bit so that it's less business, a little more welcoming and giving resources to people. And so we let them know about these kinds of things through those emails and we'll start through the meetings too. Thank you. It's so great. We love the special needs rodeo.
Cool event.
Where is that?
It's during Fair Days. It's usually in the, like Friday morning of Fair Days.
If you want some great pictures, I can show you some after.
Well, as you grow, I hope we can figure out more ways to, to support you.
Yeah. Well, thank you. We, we want to be in front of you, like working with you together as much as we can. Um, we want to be the district who isn't on the news because special ed isn't going well, but because it is going well. And, and I feel like we could be, we could just get news sources here. We've got good things going on. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies for everything you do. It's a lot of time and effort. And I know for a fact that it involves your whole family and your families support you in this. So thank you for that time and effort. It does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, now we'll move on. Let's so move to the consent items. Entertain a motion for our consent items.
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, now we'll, uh, move into some action items. Firstly, we have Zach.
Hello and thanks for having me. Um, so I just want to give you a little background on this. This is a secure entry for Midway Elementary School. Um, probably January of last year, trying to be proactive, we went and tried to get a grant for this through the, through a federal grant. Um, it happened to overlap with the state grant, so when the federal grant failed, because they only gave a little bit of money to one little school district here, um, we ended up missing out on the state grant, so we budgeted capital money for this this year. So to make sure it would happen, because it's a, a very important project, I think, Midway Elementary's. As you come in the front entry door, you have free access to the building pretty much. And I don't know, I'm sure you've all been in there. You know how that building's laid out. So. Um, this will add a set of doors directly to your left as you walk in. It'll keep you from being able to get to the cafeteria. It'll replace the set of doors directly to your right with a more secure set. And then it'll add a set of doors directly in front of you, just past the office door. So as you walk in the main door, you have one choice, nice to go in the office. So. Um, I did have an architect design and engineer this. We did put it out to bid. I didn't get any bids back, so I reached out to a few of our people and pleaded with them to give me a bid. So, and I ended up getting one back. Um, so my recommendation is that we approve the secure entry doors for Midway Elementary for beacon, commercial door and lock for sixty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the secure entry doors for Midway Elementary as outlined tonight. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion there?
Thank you. I know it's been a back and forth and a back and forth and I real, I know we all appreciate it. Parents appreciate it. It's good to see you get done.
Zach, can you tell us why this needs to be done?
So originally, I mean, we had the idea to do it before, before the legislature did anything. So it was something we were trying to get done. But then House Bill sixty-one that was passed last year, which requires a safe, safe schools, you know, safe, secure entry. Um, and then House Bill eighty-four this year, which is an amendment to that and has even more strict guidelines, is now requiring that we have secure, secure entryways. That people that come in the building don't have free access to the building without passing through the reception area. So. So we were trying to be proactive, which ended up costing us money, right? Because we, if we would have not been applying for that federal grant, we could have got the state grant, but we couldn't apply for both. So.
How, how is that plant going right now? Just in general, Midway Schools, it patched together?
It is. It's, it's running good. We, we had a little problem this past week. We had a couple parents complain of a smell in there. It turned out the, the air handler just had some broken belts. So we were, we're great. Everything's running good over there. We had our security needs assessment there this week, which is also part of House Bill eighty-four. Um, myself and Sergeant Beza with the Sheriff's Office. We meet with their school safety specialist and their principal. And we, everything was great there. I mean, there was very, very minor things that, that we need to address. So.
Zach, tell the board what about that event going to all the schools?
Yeah, so I don't know how aware or how much you guys know with the House Bill eighty-four. So it required, we, we set up, they set up a state security chief, which is Matt Pennington. So he's in the Department of Public Safety. He is the security chief. Um, it requires a county security chief through the Sheriff's Department, which is Ray Beza. He was one of our SROs. I guess he still kind of is. And then it requires a district security director, which is me. I, I got the pat on the shoulder from Sean, told him, tell me it was me. So. And then we named a security specialist for each building. So each, each school has their own security specialist. And they are funded through it. They only get a stipend through the state. Um, so it requires that we have an annual safety needs assessment with Ray and the security specialist. Um, this year I'm sitting in, the administrators are sitting in, and we have a representative from the Department of Public Safety there as well. So we just sit down, we go through all the needs of the, the school. We try to find any weak spots, if there are any. Obviously, we don't tell anybody about those, but we, we now have a list of things to address for the coming year and to request funding from the state.
You had something? Well, I would just add to that, um, that bill is probably worth us spending some time in a study session on. Uh, maybe we could, we could schedule that for next study session, Stacy. Um, it's a, it's, it's pretty extensive. There's, there's a specifically one legislator and, and others that support him that, that they're very concerned about our schools being as absolutely safe as possible. And, um, they've visited Florida a few times and other states and, and they, they're trying to figure out, you know, what exactly is best for the state of Utah and keeping our kids state, uh, safe. And I, I appreciate the proactiveness of those legislators. And, um, oftentimes when legislation is first conceptualized, um, it may be a little, it may be off base a little bit and it kind of has to go through, you know, the education lens and the superintendent's association and other associations work closely with, with these legislators on, on shaping the final product. And, and sometimes, you know, it, it's just, it, it's something that, that is, is new and it's a, it's a big deal. And I think our, our board could, could use some further discussion on it. So we'll, we'll put that on the, we'll put that on the study session for next month. Um, one thing that I want to mention about, about that bill is every school in the state of Utah um, has to have what's called a guardian. And the guardian is, is, uh, according to the bill, should have a firearm and be able to protect the building from intruders with firearms. And, uh, that's been a big source of, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the word contention between some districts and some schools and, and the actual, the actual legislation and, and how do we go about that? Um, who do we name as the guardian in each of these schools? And, and i- it's one of those things where, um, our board being proactive with resource officers and having a resource officer in every building, um, we don't have that worry. We don't, we don't have to deal with the guardian issue, which is the biggest, um, hurdle for school districts to figure out and make sure that they have someone in that position that they're comfortable with. Um, as you can imagine, somebody that's not, uh, somebody that's not a law enforcement officer to be in your building packing a gun is concerning to a lot of people. So we're, we're really pleased that, um, when I say we, that myself and the staff and Sean and, and Zach and others, we're very happy. We don't have to deal with that issue. We've got, we've got that officer there. And, uh, I've made the suggestion several times up the line and in our discussions at the state level that, um, it's my opinion that the legislature, if they're real serious about this bill, they should fund a, a, a resource officer at, at every school in the state of Utah. And, and that would, that would, uh, make it much more effective than, than coming up with retired military, retired law enforcement. I mean, people are, are reaching out to all kinds of different folks to come in and fill that spot. So. Anyway, we'll learn more about that into the future, um, in the future and, and bring the board more up to speed on that because it is a, it is a very important piece of legislation. Um, I also want to make a few comments about Midway Elementary. And Zach, you can probably have a seat.
I do, I just want to add, I have a really good playbook for House Bill eighty-four that I can, I can give you, I can, I can send to you and you can forward on to.
I just wanted to add real quick to the discussion of House Bill eighty-four before we move on. Um, for anyone or parents who are wondering, because I knew the representative, Will Clarks, from my Ogden days, had conversations with him in the Hall of the Capitol, and he knew who we were. There's forty-one districts. Some of the legislators, they don't know who, what school districts are. He knew who Wasatch was, not, not through our previous, you know, interactions. But he knew who we were because of the work of that safety committee. Um, and because of the proactiveness of boards before us, this board. And I, as a parent, I'm just appreciative to be able to, even as a school board member now, when I'm talking to a representative, he knows we are, we were in the best position we possibly could have. Some of these school districts are, eighty-four is kind of hitting them hard. It is probably hitting us the least because we were already prepared. We were already so secure. And so I just want to say thank you because our reputation preceded us.
As an, our, our representative we have from, from the Department of Public Safety, Mike Phillips. He's a local trooper for the Highway Patrol. Um, he's over our, our, our county, Summit County, Duchene, Uena, an Alpine school district. So they, you know, they just figured they'd throw that one on top. But he says we are by far the most prepared districts, that just, just the SRO part of it puts us leaps and head, and bounds ahead of other districts. So thank you all for being so proactive about that. Makes my job a lot easier. So.
I think Marion already brought this up, but thanks to the previous board and I thi, and Tom, I think was, Tom Hanson was instrumental in, in getting that approved. And you were on there and Corey?
Yeah.
I was on there as a, as a community member.
So was I.
That's how I met Tom and that's how I first met Kim.
And the rest was history.
Here we are. Bull circle.
Thank you.
So I would, I would like to make some comments about Midway Elementary. And I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm happy to say this in public. I hope there's lots of people listening. Midway Elementary is, i- it's not okay. It's not okay for us to continue to, to pack all the kids that we pack into that building. It's overcrowded. We have eight classrooms that are being conducted outside of the building in portables. Eight. Um, I went over there, um, the other morning and spent the, spent the morning with, um, the parent network, the WPN. Um, and you walk through that building and, and the secretary took me to, to go find the, our tech person. And we went into some little closet and through the hall, and I was like, where are we going? And she's like, we're going to the, to so-and-so's office. And I said, this is somebody's office? We're in a, we're in a closet. And there was another door at the end of the closet and there was an office that certainly didn't used to be an office. And, and I'm just, I'm just bringing it back to the board's attention. The board knows this. Our community that worked hard on the, on the Future Schools Committee knows this. I think it's in our, our list of recommendations from that committee that we need to do something with Midway Elementary. Um, and, and we need to have that on our radar and, and do something sooner than later. I mean, we all remember that it was part of the two thousand nineteen bond, um, that failed. We had a plan. Um, we would like to build a building in Midway that looks more like Daniel's Canyon Elementary and Old Mill Elementary, um, that, that serves the students over there and gives them, gives them a sense of, of security and, and a, and a much better learning environment. And don't get me wrong, they're doing awesome. And our, our, uh, our teachers are doing awesome and our, and our administrators. And everybody takes what they have and they, um, they do the very best with what they have. And the very best is, is having a school that's ranked in the, in, in the top twenty out of eight hundred and, and fifty-five elementary schools in the state of Utah academically. And, uh, we have another school, Old Mill Elementary, that's ranked fifth on that list, um, according to the US News and World Report. Um, so they're doing, they're doing fine. That's not okay though. It's not okay for somebody to stand up and say, well, since they're doing this well academically, you don't need a new building. It proves that you don't need a new facility over there. We do need a new facility. And as I said in that meeting with the parents, one gentleman who I think maybe came to that meeting because he knew I was going to be there, it was on the agenda, um, said, hey, these, these portables, Superintendent, you, these portables with, with one door in and one door out, they are not safe. They're not safe for our kids. And if, if we had somebody with ill intent and they, they looked our district over, that would be the easy target. Or would, would be these, these multiple portables all around the building. And that building was built in the, in the seventies during the open classroom model. Um, it's since had walls installed in, in various places. And yes, there is a newer part of the building, um, down where the gym area is. Um, but I, I want to keep it on the forefront of the, of the board's radar and, and really our community's radar that as we get our new high school down the road a ways and as we start to see, um, some light at the end of the tunnel, um, I would, I would also believe it to be my responsibility to make sure that we keep um, Midway Elementary on our radar as well, that, uh, that something has to be done. We need to go back to our previous plan. We need to pick it up. And we need to, uh, start talking about when and how we're going to, to remedy the situation there. And I think it would be good for us to do a little visit over there as a board. And, uh, preferably if we could somehow pull it off during, during school, when school's in session and we could have Principal Meekum walk us through there and, and talk to us about the things. She's worked in multiple schools in this district and, and she can tell you very quickly some of the issues that we're dealing with over there. And, uh, so I just, I would, I just want that on the record. I would, I would have this. Anybody that disagrees, we know that there were some prominent people in the, in the town of Midway that, that disagreed that they needed a new school over there. Um, I'm happy to have this conversation with anybody that would like to sit with me and have the conversation. Um, we need a new school in Midway and we need to keep it on our radar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else? Appreciate it. Anything else?
Todd, Director of Curriculum.
Tonight I have five uh curriculum resource requests. Um they're in your packet and I'll just go in order. Um two of them are um English resources, secondary English resources through Savis. And then two of them are early interventions, um software resources that are supported through a state grant. And then the first that I would like to present is Turn It In software. And that um works along with Canvas that um our high school teachers are all using to um. Manage their classes. And so the students are um great with Canvas as well as the teachers and so what Turn It In does. Is anti plagiarism software. So as the teachers are requesting um students to practice their writing, um. It's ve- it very efficiently identifies whether the, the, wh- whether it's an original source. If the, if the student um completed the assignment or co- or copied it um from somewhere else and so. Um heavily used and relied on uh by uh our academic teachers at Wasatch High School. So uh my, my request, my first request is the approval of Turn It In for twenty-one thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve the renewal of Turn It In curriculum as outlined tonight.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion there for a move on?
I appreciate that you have it because I know our teachers use it. I know they appreciate it as well.
Great, thank you.
I have a quick question. With, with um with all this advancing technology. How hard is it to keep up?
Well, that, that, that is a really great question and um I don't know that I have a solid answer for you right now. I imagine it'd be very difficult to keep up. That's come very, very fast. Um I, I, my, my personal prediction is it's, it, it, it's going to have to change. The way that we're teaching and assessing. I personally feel like that we ought to um teach students. How to use AI very effectively. And i- i- in doing so, I, 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 I feel like um restricting AI in any way would be damaging to, to student learning. Um along with that, i- if, if students were, were, were to use AI. It, it, a, a, a simple remedy for that in- instead of restricting it would be to change the way students are evaluated. Um you know, if teachers were evaluating how well students use AI to research. Um I, 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 I think we're in new territory there, but those are just some original thoughts that I personally have had on that.
Thank you.
That just brought up a question for me, um because one of our national conferences we went to, Adam Chair was, was the presenter's and he obviously is founder. Do, are we using school, like, we all know ChatGPT. Are we using SchoolGPT yet anywhere or have you guys heard?
So we have, we have software called SchoolAI.
Okay, okay, that, I knew we were using some version, but I wanted to, so it is.
Um wow, we're really excited about AI on the third floor. Uh love to talk about it more, given, given the opportunity.
That'll be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, um as Board Member Alan pointed out, these are all um curriculum renewals. So the next, the, the, the next request is through Savis and it's my perspectives. And so um the, the, this is uh curriculum resource support for our English. Six, seven, and eight classes at Timpanogus Middle School. And um one year renewal for this Savis product is twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. And my request is um that we renew it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So the, 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 the next um two software are not, yeah, well, they are software pieces. Which are also curriculum resource pieces um come through um state grants. And the grant is EISP, um early intervention software programs. And so we have the opportunity to select software that will help um our elementary students learn. And so the first um is Imagine Learning and so Imagine Learning is used primarily for English language learning. And um my, my request is uh the renewal. At a price tag of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, the majority of which comes through state grant. There, ni- ni- nine thousand nine hundred and sixty, well, no, um five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Would, would be a district expenditure because that supplements our secondary courses for English language learning. So the grant covers um our elementaries, if that makes sense. So my request is that you approve that.
All moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Okay, so the second EISP grant is for Lexia reading. And so where Imagine Learning was for English language learning, Lexia is um reading support for our elementary students. And um I'd like to request its renewal for forty-nine thousand do- forty, forty-nine thousand six hundred and eight dollars. All covered through the state EISP grant.
So moved.
Second.
Name the discussion there, this one?
I just wanna say we're number one in reading, so we're on the right track.
Love to hear that.
Keep saying that because people need to know.
Well, and I'm just gonna interject here. I, Todd and I joked around about it. My daughter's in second grade. She loves her Lexia reading. And sometimes we get people who ask, like, you have so much you're spending on curriculum. Do teachers even use it? They use it. Daily and it's making a difference how they use it. They know how to use it and this is why we provide it, so.
Like Superintendent says, it's part of their tool belt.
Yep.
I love that.
And we're number one in reading.
And we're number one in reading. Do we, should we say it again? One more time.
Well, I'm actually happy to say that that trophy is sitting on our conference table in our office on the third floor and so we're enjoying celebrating that.
Good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, last one. Um this is back to Savis My Perspectives, but this is for um eleventh grade renewal. And so somehow that, that escaped the, the um other high school renewals that were presented at a previous board meeting. So this is eleventh grade only. Um and my request is that we renew Savis My Perspectives for eleventh grade for seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
We're number one in reading?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Director of Operation Sean Kelly.
Tonight it's an HR.
And HR, excuse me.
Yeah, and HR. So as licensing continues to evolve. We have state law that dictates what we need to do and the first process for LEA specific. These are licenses that you guys grant just for our district. So these are people who. Are graduated with a bachelor's, but maybe not certified in math. They were a, an engineer, if you will. And we're giving them an LEA specific or another field. It's probably not the, the example that I gave you. But we have those people in front of you that we have to bring before the board and you have to grant them a license. The next step is after you do that, we will post that at each school so that the parents know who has an LEA specific license. And we have some of these that are on their way to get a professional license. Some of them are in areas where we don't feel like they will need that professional license. We'll just continue giving them an LEA specific. It's a way the state is generating teachers in hard-to-find subject areas, so it's a good thing. So tonight I am here to propose that you accept the LEA specific licenses before you.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you. Jason Watt.
So uh the um, I'm, I'm here to talk about a. Um upgrade to our current financial software. Um Alio is a system we've used for a number of years here and many districts. You can stop there, Stacey, on that, that one. Um most districts in the state use Alio. There's a couple of other versions and, and it's been a really effective um tool for a lot of years as over time it's aged and. It has been, the company's been purchased by a different company and for some, a few years now and they have. Um taken Alio and um are, are taking it to a web-based program. That will allow it in the future, uh the state will be requiring districts to communicate via API. Um right now we pull information out of Alio, we have to massage it into all these different ways. And then we'll upload it into state systems like the transparency website or the state auditor or and, 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 and. Um the state is moving towards being able to do that, just pull from our, our data automatically through an API. And so this takes, this is still Alio. It's called now LinkERP. And um it's a, um again, we'll be able to use the data we have in a much more accessible. And clean way. We are one of the last districts to make this move. I think we're, we're, we've. There have been a lot of bugs being worked out that we've been happy to let other districts do it. Um um but this is a, this is something that would be required of us probably in another year. Our proposal is that we start it in October of this year. And the cost for that is the fifty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh but we will be, we'll be credited back over twenty-five thousand dollars. For our Alio software that we've already paid for this year. Um it is, it is a more expensive program, but I'm really looking forward to it as we've, they've kind of go over some of the functionality of it. There are things that we're manually doing on spreadsheets now that we won't have, oh, any longer have to do that'll really make. The, our ability to um to number crunch, to budget and to see kind of where we're at mu- a much quicker process. And so the proposal, and I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you have, would be to approve. Uh for the remainder of this year and our, our, our year for this software goes October or goes actually April first to March thirty-first. So to approve for this year with the fifty-nine thousand dollars, again, that'll be minus twenty-five. And the subsequent year, if you could scroll down now, Stacy, uh the subsequent year that we wouldn't pay until April. Um is a hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that would be approximately, they do it on a per student cost. So that will ever follow a little bit with our, you know, ours, our district um, um and with our district enrollment. Um but that'd be for all of our, we use, we use Alio for all of our um HR sorts of things, all of our benefits. And then of course all of our accounting and, and uh accounts payable and all those, those systems.
What were we paying? What have we been paying a year for?
Between fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year.
And now it's gonna be.
So yeah, it'll be, it about doubles the cost of it year to year, yeah.
But it's something you feel like we're gonna have to do.
Yeah, the state will, I mean, they haven't given us a date yet, but it will be required for us to have a system that allows us. To upload directly into theirs and it, it requires a web-based program like this, uh you know, versus, versus what we have now.
Is there any other districts use anything else with, with uh?
Most of them are using this, yeah.
entertain a motion?
I move we approve the LinkERP financial software contracts as outlined tonight.
Second.
Second.
Can I just say a comment before? Um when I was reading in board docs and going over our documents, um I reached out to Jason and I just wanna say thank you because. I asked him a lot of questions and for the public who's listening, it's, this is, yes, it's a doubling of the price. But it is, the efficiency that it will bring to the district is worth that. Um and the fact that we are gonna be, the state is going to be requiring us to do this. We're being proactive so we can get into this. And it's gonna make everyone more efficient and it's gonna be able to access data so much better for our district. And so that's why I fully support this tonight and I appreciate you. Let me grill you.
Happy to answer any questions, for sure.
This gonna work you out of a job?
Definitely not that good. And I like that other districts are, are, they've, they've worked out the kinks, as Jason said. We're not the guinea pigs. Everyone else has kind of worked out the kinks and we're coming in when it's.
We're hopeful that it goes real smooth. We'll, we'll, we'll run concurrent systems for a while. And they'll obviously save all of our data and then shift completely over uh in January.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, Jason.
Okay, uh Superintendent. So we have uh, as the board will recall, there was an effort. Here in the county for multiple agencies to write a, a letter in common. To the Department of Transportation. Supporting and encouraging. A bypass around Main Street and possibly Highway forty, North Highway forty here in our county. Um I know that as board members and uh as staff that uh we have a belief. That uh it's a, it's a student safety issue for us as a school district. It's a student safety issue that we encourage. That we encourage you Dot to follow through with this, to make this happen. There's been lots of roadblocks. Um it can be argued that, you know, twenty years ago would have been, would have been a better time to put it through. Um but you know, twenty years ago would have been the best time to plant a tree. But the second best time to plant a tree is today, so we need to, we need to get this done for our students to, to get the traffic off Main Street. Um to get the traffic um slowed down and, and off of, of North Highway forty. I think we know of the um fatal accidents that's taken place in, in my mind and, and recent history of this valley. Um the most, the most fatal crashes have taken place on North Highway forty. And in our county and uh I think they need to address both those issues in some way. And uh as I just kind of share that as a lead up, the effort to have a letter that. All entities, the different cities, the county and others could all sign. Um kind of stalled out and then uh eventually uh fell apart. And it was decided that it would be better for us to do our own letters and I, I, I think that's a better way anyway. I think. Um input to those state agencies, the more letters they have in their file, the better for them. And the more times they hear it, the better. So we've drafted this letter. Um you've had some input on it. I think that uh we've kind of put the finishing touches on it. Um we're looking for approval from you as a board tonight to uh go ahead and, and sign this. You'll see at the bottom, um I would sign it in, on behalf of the board. And we would uh, we would send it to the appropriate state officials. Encouraging them to move forward with uh with this bypass project as soon as possible. Um for and in behalf of our students and the safety of our students.
Okay, motion?
I move we approve and allow Superintendent to sign. I don't know how you want it worded, but. I move that we approve this letter to the state about the EIS process and our bypass.
Second. Anything to talk about there?
I just, I'm gonna say I appreciate this Superintendent. Um Corey and I had the opportunity to work on some of this over the summer within our local meeting and having a subcommittee there. And I appreciate your work on that as well and it, it is good to see the school district step up and say. This is what we're in favor of and I hope it will help.
The bypass road has become mythical. You don't know if it'll happen or not, but it's, it's time. We, we, we need to make this happen. Great analogy of the tree, you know, really is. We need, we need to do that. We need to support it. Thank, thank you for getting this together. Appreciate it.
We, we will follow up the letter with phone calls. We've, we've talked with uh our office here. We've talked with the, these folks personally, in person, um when we can and. And uh we will follow up the, the letter with personal calls of. And, and we will follow up the, the letter with personal calls of support as well, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes that section, and I'd like to move into a board report. Anyone have anything they'd like to discuss? Yep?
Same study session, Air Locals next week, USBA, we have our regional meeting, our regional dinner. So hopefully everybody can make it. We're gonna be going over a lot of, lot of the budgetary and then also the interim legislative session. There's been a lot going on, and so we'll review that at the dinner as well next week. So hopefully everybody can make it.
Cory, anything?
I just, I attended a, with Kyle Giles and ducked in to the Wasatch Hall of Fame. And that was really a special night. My, my wife had attended with me and I, geez, I said, thanks for coming. And she's like, oh, that was wonderful. She's like, I'm so glad I was able to go. So it was just a nice evening, a nice thing that the, that the, I guess the district can do to pay honor to some, to, to a great person in our community. So it was, it was fun to attend that.
How long has the Hall of Fame been around?
That was, uh.
Late nineties, was it?
It was, yeah, it would have been the late nineties. Started, I don't have the exact year. We, we inducted four people from kind of the early historical period of Wasatch High be, beginning on the first, the first go-around. There was a, there was a student body president, Steve Carlisle, and Ron Tree, our beloved football coach that passed away much before his time. Our stadium's named, named after him. He was very instrumental in getting the Wasatch High Hall of Fame started. And Steve Carlisle's dad, Ron Carlisle, has been a big part of that and of that committee. And, and I've sat on that committee and, and Don Ritchie, who just recently passed away, he, he was also a member of the Hall of Fame, a member of the committee.
He was a big tennis, tennis player, right?
He, he did a little bit of everything. He, he was a football player, a college football player way back in the day. And then he, he'd been a, a military guy and a, and a pilot, a commercial pilot. And then he retired and moved back to Heber for his, his last years, Mr. Ritchie. But since then, the Wasatch Alumni, Wasatch High School Alumni Association, a few years ago, we, we kind of nestled that in, honed that with, with them. Brian Lee is the current president of the Alumni Association. He took over for, for Ed Kelly, who was the first president of the Alumni Association that was started about the year, the same year we opened up the new Wasatch High School in two thousand and six. So Ed Kelly, being Mr. Sean Kelly's father, longtime educator. And he, he was our first president. He and his wife served together there and, and in, in the Alumni Association. Now, Brian Lee and his wife Kim, Kim Christensen, both Wasatch graduates, they have taken over the Alumni Association, at least the leadership of it. And they've got a really strong committee that's doing some good things. And, and that's kind of who oversees the, the Wasatch High Hall of Fame at this point. If you ever get a chance, we'll always send you an invite if you ever get a chance to one of those ceremonies.
Is it a year, is it a yearly that we're doing that?
Once a year. It's always at homecoming week. It's Thursday night of homecoming in the Commons area. We started out by having a dinner. We made it a little more simple a few years back. And it's, it's just a pretty quick ceremony and, and some refreshments after. And I appreciate your words.
It's nice, truly nice.
Always is.
Anything else? You, we've got Superintendent report here, anything you need to talk about?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna follow up on our Education Elevated campaign. We want this, this is a campaign that's helping us celebrate high achievement in Wasatch County Dis, School District. And as we've risen from middle of the pack a few years ago, through a lot of very intentional hard work and, and getting the right place, people in the right places and, and the best, the best cadre of, of teachers anywhere in the country that we, that we, that we now have, some five hundred strong. We've, we've made such great progress and we're bouncing around up there at the top of the state in all three of our, of our state-tested subject areas. And it is something to celebrate. It's something to celebrate that we're changing the lives of students, students that, students that can, can understand the, the essentials as set forth by our state and, and can read and can do math and have, have literacy in, in reading and numbers and so on. And, and the science part of it's very important too. It just opens so many doors for them. And, and every student that we can bring up to grade level to be on task and to be in the competency category and above, it's, it's life-changing for each one of those students. And each year, it's several hundred students that again are, are, are brought along and, and brought above the bar. And, and we just, we don't, we don't plan on stopping anytime soon. We've got a, we've got a lot of momentum and we're heading in the right direction. And Education Elevated was a, was a campaign to make sure that our, that our community understands how well our students are doing and our teachers. And, and I think everybody's, we felt like the homecoming week was kind of a nice week to roll it out. And I would, I'd like to, I'd like, I don't know if they're aware of this or not, but I, I would like Steph and, is Garrick here? Where's Garrick? There he is. Maybe Steph and Garrick could come to the podium and just give a little quick update on, on how they feel the campaign has gone and, and maybe where we're headed in the future. And just, just take two or three minutes. And, and then I think we've got a little video that's been put together that, that might just cap it off for us tonight.
Um, it's been a ton of fun going around and celebrating and meeting with the various parent groups, WPN and school and community councils, and having opportunity, one, to share the celebration and the data and to kind of take them through the story, but also just personally to be able to thank them. Cause you know, this has all happened through COVID and it really took our community rallying around each other. Not only, I, I mentioned this in a, a community meeting just this last week, that, you know, Stanford and some of the Ivy League schools did a study. And I really think they went into it just to see how much loss, like what kind of damage was done during COVID. And I think it was just this wonderful pleasant surprise that they come to Utah and here they find this little dot at the top where it's Wasatch School District that didn't have loss in either area. We actually got growth in both areas. So I think it, it's been very, thank you for letting me go around and, you know, maybe represent our school district a little bit and just saying thank you. Like this is a community effort. Yes, our parents and our students for sure, who are doing the work and showing up and performing at our Super Bowl at the end of the year. But also our community members who donate so much of their, you know, the funds from their businesses and time and just, you know, like our peak parents who are here and all the, you know, the representation they're talking about of our community wants to get involved. And so for me personally, it's been amazing to be able to share the great things that our teachers and our students are doing, and then also to be able to say thank you. And that's a huge impart to you guys and what you're doing. You're very visionary and how you fund and support our school district. So I'm, hey, I just feel like Oprah. I'm just going around saying thank you, thank you, thank you. So I'm not giving away cards or anything, but it was, it was fun.
I do not feel like Oprah. You know, I remember Superintendent from, even before I came to this district, you talked about your trip to North Carolina. And how when you went to a certain community there, you were looking at some things that the entire community knew that the schools there were great. And I know that's kind of always been your vision and the vision of the board is that we achieve greatness and then that the whole community is proud of that. And they know that their kids are getting the very best they can possibly get and that the whole community, not just the school district, the whole community feels a part of that. And to see that kind of come into reality over the last couple of years has just been awesome. And going out, I loved my visit over to the Rotary Club. What a great group of people. And to just kind of share that and to, to feel their excitement that they're part of a community that values education and values kids the way they do. That's a group that, they value this community and they are super happy that education is where it is. Also the, the Fox thirteen news thing the other day at the high school, I think was a highlight where Fox thirteen was here to kind of highlight the school and we were able to talk about Education Elevated there. I think the more that our community gets to know this, the more, I think, one of the things that makes any community great is that the people are actually grateful to live here. They own it. They own the community. They love the community. And I think this is a big step in that direction to, to keep that going. Because I think people that have lived here have always loved this place. And they need to continue to keep loving this place and celebrations like this help for that a lot.
Thank you.
It's been amazing just as a community member and, and people seeing the signs and asking. And it's just, it's created a real buzz and energy. And, you know, I'm personally appreciative to, to be able to brag about this a little bit and brag about what we're doing with, with everyone. And, and, and again, it ties so much to what we did with previous with COVID. And there's so many that need to be pointed out and commended for getting through that battle. And, but there is, we, we have a, a positive energy going on right now. We really, really do. And let's ride that wave.
Yeah. I just want to say, I went to the county council meeting with Steph and Jason and Stacy and I think Garrick was there. Garrick, were you? No? Okay.
Kirsta.
Kirsta was there and she did such a great job presenting and telling the story. And she, she really was a great beacon of light there, so, good job.
It, you know, we, we, we give credit to our, our students. Our students are, are, they do expect to excel when they walk through the doors of our schools. That's become our culture. And none of this, you know, none of this happens without our students really paying attention to doing their best and understanding what their job is while they're here at school to, 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 to be learners, to become lifelong learners and, and to walk into, to class each day wanting to, to learn all they can. And, and I mentioned our teachers and, and I, I want to just finish up with our, with our administrators, our principals, and, and the people in this room, our district administrators. We, we're just so fortunate in this district. People ask me all the time, how do you have so many of the top educators around all in one little small district up in, up in the Heber Valley? And, you know, success, success turns into more success. Success begets success and, and most of our, most of our, and, and I would just say, you know, you just, you just heard, heard from two of the best. You just heard from two of the best administrators in, in the land that understand how this whole system works. And we're, we're very thankful to them and we're thankful to all of the people sitting in the seats here representing Wasatch County School District because we, we have just fantastic leadership. And it's, it's my privilege to be a part of it. We've got a fun little video to end with. These T-shirts on the front, they say, "Leading Out in Student Achievement," if it's hard to see. And then on the back, they have our Educated, our, our Education Elevated logo on the back. And on Friday of homecoming, we, there were so many adults wearing these shirts in the district. And we've got this little video to share and, and that'll wrap up my report.
Maybe sound settings, Stacy? Oh, there you go. I'll try to do it.
Can you start it to the front?
Oh, don't limit me to Barry. I can do all sorts of things.
So is Jason?
He's morning. There you go.
Sad.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. That was terrific. With that, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll have a second.
You have a second? I second it anyway.
I know.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
One of those non-debatable, somebody.
I'll call him.